Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the town council meeting for Monday, April 27th, 2020. The first item on the agenda is our call to order and I call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance and as many of you know, we are holding these meetings via Zoom instead of in person and it's been a tradition over the last year to invite various groups and individuals from town to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And so this evening, in lieu of anyone being able to appear live, I'd like to ask WCAT to present this week's Pledge of Allegiance that is led by a number of young people within our community. So with that, WCAT please. And I would like to thank all of our participants in this week's Pledge of Allegiance. Again, they are just incredibly cute kids. So thank you. Thank you everyone for taking part in that. And thank you WCAT for putting that together again and all your great work while we have been all Zooming instead of being in person. Third item on the agenda, item number three is attendance. I see that all seven councillors are in attendance for this evening. So we'll move on to item number four, which is the approval of the April 13th, 2020 meeting minutes. I will entertain a motion for the approval of those minutes. Moved by councillor Denaco, seconded by councillor May. Is there any discussion? Seeing none councillors, the motion before you is the approval of the April 13th, 2020 minutes. Again, as we're meeting via Zoom, everything will be by roll call vote. So I'll begin with Vice Chair Santos.
Yes.
Councillor May.
Yes.
Councillor Chimes.
Yes.
Councillor Butt.
Yes.
Councillor Denaco.
Yes.
And councillor Smith Galvin.
Yes.
And Chairman Dombrowski, yes, motion carried 7-0. Thank you for that. Item number five on the agenda is public engagement. This is the opportunity for members of our community to offer brief comments before the council and the council has the opportunity to ask follow up questions or perhaps address any issues at a later meeting where we can vote on any items that are raised. So with that, Madam Clerk, do we have any public engagement for this evening?
No chairman, no public engagement.
All right. Thank you for that. We're moving on now to item number six on the agenda. That is for a public hearing. This public hearing was properly noticed and it's by Vavia 2 LLC. This relates to a license at the gas station at 950 Main Street. I will note that we are very fortunate this evening to have members of our delegation participating and with the council's indulgence, I would like to entertain a motion to open up this public hearing, but then to continue it until we have concluded with our state delegation as our state delegation is, has another commitment this evening and I want to be sure that we are able to maximize our time. And as soon as they're concluded, the public hearing will continue. So with that, I will entertain a motion first to open the public hearing.
Still moved.
Second. So moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by councillor Denaco. Again, a roll call vote. Vice Chair Santos.
Yes.
Councillor May.
Yes.
Councillor Chimes.
Yes.
Councillor Butt.
Yes.
Councillor Denaco.
Yes.
And councillor Smith Galvin. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Dombrowski as well. So with that, I will entertain a second motion which will allow us to continue the public hearing until such time as we've completed with our special guest or delegation this evening.
So moved.
All right. So moved by councillor Chimes, seconded by councillor May. Any discussion? Seeing none the motion before you, that is to briefly continue this hearing until after our delegation. Roll call vote. Vice Chair Santos.
Aye.
Councillor Chimes.
Yes.
Councillor May.
Yes.
Councillor Smith Galvin.
Yes.
Councillor Butt.
Yes.
And councillor Denaco.
Yes.
All right. So with that, this open public hearing is going to be temporarily suspended while we turn to the next item on the agenda, which is item number seven. And again, we'll come back to that public hearing as soon as we conclude. So with that, item number seven on the agenda is the invitation of our state delegation. I'm very excited to see here this evening that we have members of our state delegation. We have with us this evening Senator Lewis as well as Representative Wong. And I'd like to offer a special welcome and congratulations to Representative Lippa Garabedian who is joining us for the first time as our newly elected representative. So good evening to all three of you and thank you for joining. So with that, I thought it might make sense for each of, obviously the most pressing issue before our community at present is the COVID-19 pandemic. I know that there's a lot that's being done at the state level and I know members of our council may have a number of questions related to that, but also some other issues as well because there's a lot going on notwithstanding are working separately. So with that, I thought perhaps if we could go around and if each member of the delegation wouldn't mind just offering a few remarks in terms of what he or she is working on right now and then we'll leave them some time for questions by members of the council. So with that, I'll start first with Senator Lewis. Good evening and welcome. Thank you for coming.
Well, thank you Mr. Chairman. Hopefully everybody can hear me. Good evening councillors and community members. I hope that you and all of your loved ones are safe and well. And I want to start by saying thank you and just extending our gratitude to Wakefield's first responders and local public health staff and of course, all of our medical professionals at Melrose Wakefield Hospital and all of our hospitals and our frontline workers who are doing so much for all of us during this crisis. At the state government level, really since the pandemic began earlier this year, we've been pursuing what I would describe as a two pronged strategy to try to respond as best we can to this crisis. The first part is to contain the spread of the virus and really that's all about minimizing the number of people, obviously you get infected, the number of people who need to be hospitalized with a serious case of this, of this disease and most importantly, to save lives. And that's why physical distancing and personal hygiene and all of the different steps that we've been taking at the local level and state level and federal level are so important. And we've really, I think, been overall doing a very good job of that. And it does appear that we have certainly prevented, you know, our hospitals from being overwhelmed by sick residents and a Melrose Wakefield Hospital and others have done a great job, I think, preparing for this surge and managing through it and really again, want to extend our gratitude to them. The second part of our strategy has been to try to mitigate the devastating economic impacts, you know, of this pandemic on our residents, small businesses, nonprofits, municipalities, and other folks in our communities. So let me just very briefly mention some of the state and federal government actions that have been taken over the last, you know, six to eight weeks. And there's been obviously a lot that's been happening. So I'm just going to highlight a few and then I imagine other members of the delegation will want to, you know, touch on some of these areas that they personally have been very involved in. So first of all, unemployment benefits have been significantly strengthened and expanded and that includes extending benefits to workers who are not traditionally covered by UI. That includes independent contractors, people who are self-employed, gig economy workers. So that's been, that's a very, that's really unprecedented and that's, that's helping a lot of people. Support for small businesses and nonprofits, obviously largely through the Federal Cares Act, the Paycheck Protection Program, small business loans. And good news is that that program was just recapitalized by Congress. And in fact, as of today, local banks are again, accepting applications to try to help our small businesses, our main street businesses, our nonprofits. It's a vital lifeline for them. We've also passed emergency funding at the state level and the federal level for our public health staff, for our hospitals and our nursing homes and other healthcare providers. We passed legislation to provide help for our municipalities to give you, as you well know, some additional budgeting flexibility, relief from permitting deadlines, the constructive approval, action around town meeting and local spring elections, all of those, those sorts of things. We extended the state and federal tax filing deadlines. So now instead of April 15th, it's July 15th. We also at the state level placed a moratorium on any evictions or foreclosures. So that obviously helps renters, homeowners, and it also covers small businesses up to 150 employees. They are also protected if they are unable to pay their rent to their landlord during this crisis. Small businesses also get some relief through that moratorium. We also took action to cancel MCAS tests, standardized tests for the remainder of this school year, which was certainly a priority we heard from our educators. And just this past week, we authorized electronic notarization for real estate and business transactions. That's very important to continue for significant parts of our economy to continue to operate. There are further issues that, you know, that we are actively working on and that all of the Wakefield delegation is very involved in. Again, I'll just touch on very briefly on a few. First of all, so critical to do what we can to protect the vulnerable residents and staff in our nursing homes and other facilities that how are home to vulnerable populations. We all know how devastating this virus has been in terms of its impact on the elderly and on our nursing homes. And there's additional steps we are taking to increase support for our nursing homes. Also, we're working on legislation to strengthen the social safety net for low income families. We're working on legislation to provide more vote by mail and early voting options for our fall elections, both the September primary and the November general election. So we want to make sure that people aren't having to choose between participating in our democracy and their personal health and safety. Just this past week, I, along with Representative Paul Donato filed emergency paid sick time legislation, which seeks to fill in gaps to make sure all workers have access to paid sick time so they don't have to go to work and potentially put themselves and others at risk. And then also just wanted to mention that the state legislature's education committee, which I chair in the senate, is planning an oversight hearing next week to learn more about how distance learning, remote learning is going in our schools across the Commonwealth. What's working well? What challenges are we running into? What are the best practices we can learn from each other? So we'll get you all the details for that, obviously virtual hearing and, you know, councillors, school committee members, parents are all welcome to tune in to that as well next week. In terms of the budget outlook for the state and what that means for Wakefield and our municipalities, we're hopeful that there won't be any 9C cuts in the current fiscal year, which is obviously fiscal year 20. We are far enough through the year that even though state revenues are being impacted already, we're hopeful we can cover those with our state's rainy day fund and some other, other things we're doing. The outlook however, for fiscal year 21, which starts July 1st, you know, I'm not going to mince words, it's pretty grim. The normal budget process, which would be well underway by now in an ordinary year, has been delayed by at least a couple months. And in fact, just on April 14th, the House of Representatives, the senate and the Baker administration had to essentially restart the budget process by convening a revenue consensus hearing. So we heard from economists and experts around the local economy and their, according to their testimony, the state government can expect anywhere from a $4 billion to a $6 billion less in revenue than census forecast before the pandemic back in January. So a $4 to $6 billion reduction in state revenues on about, about $30 billion in state revenues, we get about another $10 billion in federal revenues. But that's a somewhere between a 13 to an 18% reduction in state revenues. So that's, that is very, very, very significant. I mean, that would be significantly more than what we experienced in the last recession, you know, in 2009. The experts also expect that the state's unemployment rate could reach as high as 20%. We've been seeing a tremendous number of new applications for unemployment benefits and food stamps and other programs in the last several weeks, as you probably know. In terms of addressing that revenue shortfall, we are fortunate that the state has been prudent in managing our budgets over the last 10 years. And so we do have a rainy day fund and we're obviously going to have to tap that fund. And really the big unknown right now is how much aid for states will be included in the next federal stimulus bill. There was some money in the Cares Act, but we're really hoping and counting on significant aid for states and also hopefully for municipalities in the next federal stimulus bill that we know they are working on. And we were told by Congressman Richard Neal, who's the chair of the House Ways and Means Committee this weekend, that he hopes to have that bill emerge in the, within the next 10 days. So that will give us a lot more insight into what's available for the state for revenues for building our budget for next year. We hope to provide guidance to Wakefield and our other municipalities regarding chapter 70 and unrestricted local aids, and so those are the two major local aid accounts. I cannot tell you exactly when we will provide that guidance to you. I can tell you a top priority, certainly for me and the other members of the delegation, and I really think for all of our colleagues to get that guidance to you as soon as possible because we know it's critical to helping you obviously build the town budget for fiscal year 21. So as soon as we have more information around the timeline, the process for the state budget and obviously the numbers, we're going to get those to you. Let me wrap up by saying that, you know, the partnership that we have between local government and state government is, in my opinion, more important than ever during this crisis. And we must continue to work closely together as we have been to keep our residents safe first and foremost, and to mitigate as much as we possibly can the economic hardship from, from this pandemic on our communities. So thanks again for this opportunity to be with you this evening and happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much Senator Lewis for that. If it pleases the council, I was hoping we could maybe have Representative Wong and then Representative Lippa Garabedian next week and that we can save questions till the end if it works for everyone. So with that, good evening Representative Wong and thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you very much for inviting us. I want to make sure I, okay, I'm not muted. I just want to say that was with this virus going on, our main concern was, one of the main concern was the masks for our first responders. So between Mima, myself and our ally in the South Pacific, Taiwan, we got Taiwan to donate 100,000 masks to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And right now it's at Mima, the headquarters. But when Taiwan donated 100,000 masks, the governor also matched it with another 100,000 masks to go to first responders. Working with our administration, Steve Mayo, those masks are going to go to our first responders, which is police and firefighters. And the way it goes is Steve Mayo contacted Mima and then went to CDC, which is the Center of Disease, and then under that was COC, which is the Emergency Operations Center. And that's where we're going to be getting free masks for our first responders in Wakefield. Also this morning, as the senator mentioned, PPP, Paycheck Protection Program started at 10:30 this morning. It started last month, but it ran out of money and then Congress added more money to it. So I would advise people to reapply for the PPP. We also passed a bill to protect people from getting evicted from apartments or houses. But I also would like to do is work the senate, help the landlord also with their mortgages, maybe with the banks by talking with them. And this afternoon, the governor just signed that he notary, he just signed it this afternoon. So that'll be going to effect. The other thing I was working on was a bill that Paul Brodeur brought in and it was to help seniors with their tax relief and that's House Bill 4475. And since he left, I've been working on it. I brought it through House Clerk, Senate Clerk, Public Service Committee, and now it's in third reading. Hopefully before the end of the week, we can get our third reading and back to the House to push it. And then senate and then hopefully the governor will sign it. And saying this, you know, this is very tough times and a lot of money is being spent on the virus and it's hard to predict what we can do later because of all the money being spent. But I think with the senate and the House or the state delegation working together, I think we'll do whatever we can for Wakefield. Thank you.
Thank you very much Representative Wong for those remarks. And again, we will hold questions until the end. And my final introduction will be to Representative Kate Lippa Garabedian. Good evening Representative Lippa Garabedian. We're excited to have you on board and again, congratulations and welcome. This being your first time before this body.
Thank you. It's really nice to see you all. I really appreciate the invitation. It's nice to figure out ways to be together even during this remarkable time. And I'm pleased to be able to join Senator Lewis and Representative Wong and ensuring that Wakefield has a full delegation representing it on Beacon Hill. I just finished up my first month on the job and wasn't anticipating that this would be our reality these days, but I'm very happy to be able to support the residents of Wakefield as we navigate this time together. I'll just say at the outset that you are welcome to reach out to me at any time. My office number is 617-720-2020 and my state email address is kate.lippa-garabedian@mahouse.gov. It's a mouthful, but you can find me in either way. And we've been working closely with many residents in Wakefield to help them navigate the unemployment insurance system, which so many people are accessing this, these days for the first time. And certainly I join my more seasoned colleagues in feeling a great level of responsibility to help people and great appreciation for what families are going through. I won't belabor much of what the senator and the representative have already shared with you. I would add, in addition to the laws that were mentioned, the municipal flexibility law, which I know you all are quite aware of having postponed your town meeting, there's also the education law that Senator Lewis spoke about, the housing security law. One additional one that was passed was the limited liability for healthcare workers to ensure that we are mindful of the type of environment in which they are operating. And so that was passed unanimously in both houses and signed by the governor recently. We also sent to the governor last week a bill, I confess, I'm not sure if he signed it today, related to Board of Health Standards and creating a state action plan with a lot of attention and support for local boards of health. They are doing tremendous work right now. I've been in touch with Ruth Clay in the last week or so just to check in and see how things are going in Wakefield and Melrose. In addition to Representative Wong's mention of your home rule petition, I did reach out today to staff for the committee in which that currently sits, the committee on bills in the third reading. Because in an earlier committee, some of the language that you all passed and sent to Beacon Hill was tweaked just a little bit. And sometimes when the legislature and a committee tweaks the language, it has to come back to the town for approval before it can actually reach the governor's desk. So House Council and the committee staff analyzed that quickly and determined that it does not need another vote from Wakefield. So that's good news. It's one less procedural hurdle to get it to the finish line. And to Representative Wong's point, that's a high priority for me as well to really stay focused on that. I know that the chair of that committee with whom both Donald and I have been in touch really thinks highly of the bill. And so that's good news as well. I guess I'll close by just mentioning that my office has put out a number of one-page resources that we've put on my website and put out in social media and through my email newsletter. They're focused on the unemployment benefits piece. That's a huge piece for many people right now, both in terms of the state system, which, you know, has been taxed with hundreds of thousands of, you know, requests, as well as through the new federal cares act avenue. And so there's a one-page resource that sort of has links and sort of walks people through how you would go about applying. We've also put out a resource for small businesses, one on food security. Wakefield has a fantastic food pantry. There's also, you know, several other resources and ways for people to sign up to get benefits to the degree that they are struggling to get food to their families. I know the public schools also have a program in place in Wakefield. So my one-page resource has links to all of that information. We've done one on personal wellbeing. That's friend of mine for me right now in terms of just the mental health of people, how they can access some good resources, telehealth, also resources related to domestic violence and just personal security. So the people are welcome to try to take that. And then one also on grieving leaving that was created by my house colleagues. So if there are other resources or topics that you all are hearing a lot from your constituents about, our constituents about, that you think would be helpful for us to partner together to really synthesize what's a lot of information coming at people quickly, I'm happy to work with you and support you in that effort. And I'm just very grateful for all the hard work you all are doing and here to answer questions that you have and continue to learn from you. So thank you very much for having me tonight.
Great. Thank you so much Representative Lippa Garabedian. Again, we appreciate you being here as well. So with that, I'll open up the opportunity for councillors to ask any questions they may have with the delegation. If anyone could just raise their hand on Zoom. Everyone's thinking very hard right now. Well, first off, I want to thank all three of our legislators here tonight for offering us that very thorough overview of what's been going on. I know that one of the more pressing issues for us as a community relates to reimbursements for what we're having to expend as a town in order to help to mitigate, you know, this pandemic. And I know there's a lot of understanding that we should be receiving reimbursements from the state, I think flowing from, from the federal government on that. I don't know whether any of the three of you might be able to comment on that, kind of where things stand at present and what the expectations are going forward. Representative Wong or, let's see, or Senator Lewis? Or Representative Garabedian?
Yeah, I'm happy to jump in although others can, should as well. It's, this is Jason Lewis. So yes, I think it's a very important to track, obviously, any spending the town is incurring related to this state of emergency. And it is our expectation that because the governor declared a state of emergency and there's a president declared a national state of emergency, that does activate, you know, FEMA at the federal level and MIMA at the state level. And that should lead to those expenses being reimbursable. That, I don't know the exact timing around that, but that is our expectation. That's right.
I don't think I have anything really to add other than you may know that the, I'm sure you saw that the municipal flexibility bill includes language related to the use of free cash with the recognition that in this time, you know, we need to make it possible for municipalities. for municipalities to access resources that are available to them to address this crisis. So I know you're aware of that, but just for folks who are watching or listening in.
Certainly. Very important. Yes, thank you for that.
And by the way, I did want to, I forgot to mention this earlier. You know, I know one of the things that Wakefield as a community undertook was really to help distribute masks to members of the community, particularly seniors, and those are all vulnerable. And I had heard from a number of people who were so appreciative of what you did and making those masks available. So really, kudos to, you know, to the town leaders for putting that program together.
I see that we have a question from Councilor Chines. So Councilor Chines, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, you know, Jason, Kate, and Donald, for all of your great leadership. You know, it's really wonderful to partner with all three of you. And, you know, your responsiveness, not only to us as a town, but to the residents of your district has been really, really outstanding. So appreciate you taking the time here today. I had two questions I wanted to ask. One sort of ties to Mr. Dubrowski's comment around reimbursements, and it's related to the Mass School Building Authority. Do you have a sense as to, you know, where things will go with projects that are in the pipeline with the MSBA? I mean, we obviously have the Greenwood School roof as something that, you know, we hope to be moving on very soon. And of course, we're at the beginning stages of the high school. Any sense as to, you know, where things are going in terms of funding for the MSBA over the next couple of years?
So I'm happy to try to take that one. So the short answer is we don't really know yet, you know, what impact the pandemic is going to have directly on the MSBA and their sort of funding capacity. What we do know is that the MSBA relies upon, their funding stream is a penny from the sales tax. So when sales tax revenues do fall, you know, which obviously they are right now, that does impact the, you know, the revenue stream that the MSBA receives. Obviously, no one knows right now how significant, you know, that's going to be. Obviously depends how long the, this, you know, crisis continues. But on the other hand, in the Student Opportunity Act that we passed late last year, we actually expanded the capacity or the annual sort of spending capacity for the MSBA because basically they rely on the sales tax revenue, but then they borrow against that. So we essentially increased their borrowing capacity. So that gives them more capacity. The sales tax decline sort of hurts. So you've got two sort of different, you know, kind of countervailing forces there. You know, what I would say right now is, you know, ideally should be full steam ahead, you know, with Greenwood and also, of course, with the high school project. You know, it's going to be a while still before, you know, that's going to be in the ready for, you know, ready for reimbursement from the MSBA. So, you know, I think, hopefully, by the time we get there, you know, we'll be over this pandemic and, you know, be in a better place. So I don't think it should change anything that the town is undertaking right now with the MSBA, but we, you know, we will continue to watch it closely.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Sorry, just one other question on another topic, if I may, Mr. Chair. Second thing that I wanted to ask about, you know, prior to the COVID crisis, one of the things that, you know, I think we've been struggling with as a region, and I think Wakefield's very much affected by it, given how many folks in the community, you know, work in Boston, is transportation. You know, both people who are stuck in traffic driving to work or driving other places or don't have access or ideal access to the MBTA. And, you know, obviously, we're seeing with this crisis, the MBTA's revenue is coming down quite a bit. You know, I'd love to get your thoughts and recognize that, you know, this is sort of an early time to ask this, but would love to get thoughts from each of you in terms of, you know, what is the path forward, both in the short term, but also in the longer term as we come out of this crisis, to making sure that we're able to enhance access to transportation and, you know, hopefully reduce congestion in the region and in Wakefield specifically?
Well, I can start, but I think, you know, Donald and Jason will have a little bit, maybe more to say. I just missed most of the debate and review of bills that was occurring at the State House just before COVID hit. And it certainly seemed as though the legislature was teeing up, you know, a pretty comprehensive package to address transportation. And that certainly has been a huge priority for our district, for Wakefield, Melrose, and Malden in terms of just greater access, to your point, you know, Jonathan, in terms of also just affordability and then the quality of the experience. That was something that I've talked about a lot with folks in Wakefield and accessing the commuter rail, the subway, the buses, and considering how that also plays into the concerns that we howl have about our climate crisis and the way in which mass transit can really be, you know, a huge lever in that regard. Of course, now, to your point, the revenue has bottomed out as, you know, people are working from home. And I was just on a conference call today with MAPC talking about, you know, various regional issues in Boston, and one was certainly around transportation. And they shared, you know, a sentiment that I've read elsewhere and that certainly as someone who's used the Orange Line daily for the, you know, last five-plus years also thinks about is what will human behavior be following COVID? And how comfortable are people actually going to feel using mass transit? That in the near term, we may actually see that this exacerbates some of the congestion and gridlock that we've experienced and sort of de-incentivizes people from getting on the train and the bus when in the long run, that's really what we want people to feel comfortable doing. So I don't have a great answer for you. I do think, you know, we've seen signs from leadership when they, you know, they've talked about this, that there's still an appetite to do work beyond COVID, and I expect that will happen, you know, in the coming months. And certainly, the transportation conversation was teed up. The question, of course, is, you know, what kind of revenue will be available to us to make some of the policy changes that were contemplated before this happened? And so, you know, that remains to be seen in some part.
Thank you for that, Representative Lippa-Garabedian. I think Senator Lewis, just on your point about schools and school funding, a question for you. If we find ourselves in a situation come this fall where we're hearing of things like needing to continue to social distance, for example, or, you know, class sizes will need to be smaller, will need to have children spread out more. Where do we stand in terms of the state's recognition that those sorts of measures for a municipality would be incredibly challenging to be able to do and to effectuate, and the funding needed for such measures would be substantial? Are those discussions being had? Is that sort of forethought being given at this point? Or where are you in that process?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yeah, that's a really important question. And the answer is absolutely. Those discussions, you know, are underway now. You know, when the governor announced, was it last week, I guess, that, you know, schools were going to stay closed through the end of the school year, and Commissioner Riley, the Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education, shared remarks about that. He actually said at that time that we are going to be using this time to really be planning for, you know, what it's going to look like when students and teachers can come back and, you know, physically into the buildings. So while we're right now trying to improve the way we're delivering, you know, remote learning, because we're going to be in that mode for at least another couple of months, and we want to make the most of it for our students and hopefully make it work for our families. At the same time, we are, you know, there's a lot of thinking going on. It's, you know, being led by the Department of Education, but they're working with superintendents and, you know, all the teacher unions and all kinds of other stakeholders about exactly your point. You know, what is it going to look like in the fall, a couple of different scenarios probably? And hopefully, obviously, we all want to get students back in the classroom, but it has to be safe. So how do we handle transportation? How do we handle students actually in classrooms, in meals, activities? So it is very challenging to think through it all. You know, we do see some models in other countries. You know, Denmark is an example right now of getting students back to school and taking these precautions. You know, Denmark's obviously a lot smaller population than, well, it's probably actually similar to Massachusetts, but a lot smaller than the country as a whole. And yes, I think we do recognize that, you know, this is going to bring increased costs as well, you know, for our schools. So we have to be cognizant of that in the state budget for sure. But also, again, this is why it's so important that we get additional help from the federal government. There was some money in the Federal CARES Act for K through 12. Most of that's going to flow through the Title I formula. But again, we need more help from the federal government. So all of you, my advice is continue to, you know, speak to Congressman Maltin's office or directly to the congressman. And, you know, Senators Markey and Warren, I know they, you know, they want to do everything they can for us, but it's good for them to hear directly, you know, from our local officials and from residents because they, the reality is that the federal government in a crisis like this, you know, they have a lot more fiscal capacity than the state does and obviously than the town does.
Thank you for that, Senator. I believe Counselor Smith-Galvin had a question.
Actually, Jonathan asked it, so I will defer to the next person.
Fair enough. So with that, I believe Counselor Bott had a question.
Hi. Sorry about that. So I also wanted to echo what Jonathan asked about transportation and ask that you guys just all keep that in mind as someone who sees you regularly on the Orange Line. Two things just to keep in mind, and we're going to be talking about one of these later on. But one, the House actually last week passed a bill collecting COVID data, and I think that's really, really important. And so as the state legislature, I'm just going to ask, as you guys can pass that bill, I just think it's really important, especially for minority populations. And Jason, looking at you, the House did not include collecting LGBTQ data in their version of the bill. And if you could maybe get that in the Senate version, it would be much appreciated. I think that's really important for us to actually find out who's getting hurt and succumbing to this virus. And that's the other thing that Chief Scori and the public health officials will talk about as you think about bills to help out municipalities in the future. Kate touched upon this a little bit, but to really think about individuals, again, vulnerable populations, so people with mental health, substance abuse, and transient folks. I know you've done some about the homeless population. But as the chiefs will talk about, and I'm sure Tom and the Board of Health will talk about, it's a population that we worry a lot about in Wakefield. And so, you know, happy to have conversations with you, but with the experts in our town of just making sure that we're looking out for those populations as you come up with some statewide legislation.
Thank you, Counselor Bott, for that. Counselor Dinakka, do you still have a question?
Just a quick one in regards to the CARES Act funding and the money from the state. There were several local businesses that are still struggling with the process of getting their applications put in and/or being put on a list. They missed the first round completely. And now there's more money becoming available. Who do these people have that they can contact to make sure that their applications are being processed properly? There's two plans out there right now, but they're all saying that they apply for them. They get put on hold. They get told that they have to go to a different area to supply more information on another form. I feel like they're getting the runaround. And these are the ones that are really entrenched in the town that need the support, and they're not getting it. So how do we get information to them? Because I don't have all the answers for them, and I direct them to the state or I direct them to the SBA. But they try all that. Right now, sole proprietors seem to be having the hardest time. They don't know which part of the act they're supposed to file under. So any type of assistance to that group or to any group right now, the small businesses that really need the money, some sort of outreach would be great. So I don't know how that would happen from the state, though. Anybody want to take a try?
I know Representative Wong, you as had you, Senator Lewis, and Lippa-Garabedian. I don't know if any of you want to offer a comment on that. I will say that with the replenishment of the PPP program, those that have applied may not apply a second time. They're able to use the existing application, so folks may or may not know that, but that's an important piece. But any of you who may want to weigh in on that?
Well, I can start. You know, it's a very good question, Paul, and one that it is really complicated. I know that the Senator, I believe maybe Representative Wong's office and my office have all put together sort of, you know, one-page or easily accessible resources that describe each of the different federal programs that are available currently and have been re-upped for a second round just as of, you know, today going live. You know, there's one pot of money where a small business owner would apply directly to the SBA. There's a different program where you have to go through a qualified lender on the PPP program. So, you know, there are a lot of acronyms. It is confusing. What I found is, you know, if someone wants to reach out to me or to, I'm sure your colleagues, you know, our offices will help them to navigate a particular each question, context in which you're asking. I've also, you know, to the degree that someone from Wakefield, I would work with Congressman Maltin's office. If it's someone in Melrose or Malden, I'm going to Congresswoman Clark's office and working, you know, very closely with our federal colleagues to help people with that program. But to your point, there is a sense of urgency about it because we've seen, you know, the pot is not unlimited. And so it's really important for people to move quickly. And I know that can create an added level of stress. So to the degree that we, the state, to your point, is available, certainly I think all three of us would be happy and able to assist.
Great. Thank you.
Jason, you're on mute. Senator, you're on mute.
Okay, got it. Thank you. I would just echo what Representative Lippa-Garabedian just said and just offer again that all three of us, our offices are a resource for our residents and local businesses and just urge anyone who isn't sure how any of these small business programs work, if they're not sure about their unemployment benefits, if they're having difficulty dealing with a state agency or another government agency, reach out to us by phone or email or Facebook message. That's our top priority right now, is to try to work through those issues. If we can't solve it, we'll make sure someone from Congressman Maltin's office, you know, gets on the phone with the person and we try to work it through. For a sole proprietor, Paul, that person may also have the option of going on unemployment benefits. And those are available right now for sole proprietors. So that can be, in some cases, even a better option than trying to get one of these business loan or grant programs. So there are some options. We have guides that are available on our website and Facebook, just like Representative Lippa-Garabedian does and others. But again, we're happy to, you know, talk through this with anyone in particular.
I guess I'll add two more quick things. One is, of course, there's also the Chamber, which I've seen has been trying to put out information. And we've been in touch, you know, with the Wakefield-Linfield Chamber of Commerce. And I'm getting the emails, and I see that they're another resource for providing information, so particularly for their members, but hopefully even for others in your community, that could be a place to go. The other thing I'll say, and I hesitate just a little bit because it's conjecture, but in the first round of some of these programs, for the PPP particularly, what we found was some of the smaller local banks actually had better luck getting the applications done. And, you know, I heard that anecdotally from a couple of businesses here in Melrose, and I heard it, you know, in the caucus call that I was on, that in other parts of the Commonwealth, some of the bigger banks actually were trying to bundle a lot of these applications together and submit them all at once. And that may have actually worked to the detriment of the businesses that were applying. Now, whether that will be the experience in this round of funding, I don't know. But that's just something that I have heard.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Representative. Actually, Vice Chair Santos, do you have a question?
My questions were all answered. I just want to thank you all for the work you're doing. And say hi, Kate. It's nice to see you again. And I can't imagine, I know from higher education And I can't imagine, I know from higher education, we had to turn on a dime and change everything we did in a matter of weeks, and I'm sure you're all doing the same. So thank you very much for being responsive to us and for your work.
Thank you, Anne. Nice to see you too.
And Senator Lewis, just a final question for you related to Chapter 70 funding. I know that we've raised this before and I know there's been a lot of reform relative to education spend. In looking at the cherry sheet that I believe in Mr. Mail can weigh in on this, I believe the cherry sheet we saw maybe end of January of this year, if I'm not mistaken. And I think that's been our only, our only basis. We saw a preliminary number of what we were expecting in Chapter 70 funding. And we literally just did a very basic elementary division of that amount by a number of pupils or students. And we compared that to a lot of other demographically comparable communities. And we just found that our number was lower. And I know that that historically seems to have been lower. Oftentimes we hear that Reading is an anomaly and that they're higher than us, and they have consistently been higher than us. But this seems like a puzzle that we've not been able to solve. But it really feels like Wakefield is consistently not getting its fair share of that funding. Have you been able to look into that at all? And are you able to speak to why it is that if we look at Reading versus Wakefield or versus Winchester, we seem to be getting less per pupil, per student?
So, so as you may recall, it seems like ages ago, time all blurs together, you know, since the pandemic began. But we, my office, working with the rest of the delegation, did organize a forum that we were going to host to dig into this in a lot more depth and answer questions, you know, from the school committee and the council and the community. Unfortunately, that had to be canceled because of the pandemic. But we did produce a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation that I actually narrated so that anybody could just watch it at home. And so hopefully, Mr. Chairman, you've had a chance to watch that. If you haven't, we'll resend it to you. But it certainly, I think, gets, tries to answer, you know, how Chapter 70 works, what the Student Opportunity Act did to change it, and look specifically at Wakefield's Chapter 70 funding, you know, as compared to some surrounding communities. And, you know, tries to get at some of those, you know, questions. So happy to discuss that further if you, we can resend that again. And also, once we're able to, you know, get together, I guess we could even do it virtually. We could, I'm happy to also go through that with everybody. But the second point I would make is that, you know, given really it's how much has changed, you know, since we were in that position in January, when the governor put out his original budget for fiscal year '21. Again, as I shared in my earlier remarks, we're now looking at a vastly different outlook for fiscal year '21, which starts July 1st. And so, you know, any numbers that were out there in January, you know, for Chapter 70, for unrestricted local aid, you know, really those have to be thrown out right now. As I said, the state budget process has basically had to be restarted. April 14th, we had a new consensus revenue hearing with, you know, economists and other experts to try to understand, you know, what the economic impact's going to be on our state and therefore what the, we can expect in state revenues. So we're going to give you guidance, you know, as soon as we can as to what that means for Chapter 70 for Wakefield or, you know, other cities and towns and as well as unrestricted local aid.
And I know certainly
If I put the link to that presentation in the chat? Would that be helpful to people?
That'd be great, yes, indeed. I do know that certainly those numbers are in flux. And I don't think anyone would expect we could, we try to pin down any numbers at this point. But because we're talking about formulas with Chapter 70 funding, the input number is obviously of concern, but it's more the output in terms of how that's being distributed. And I think that's, that's where the rub has been, especially, you know, over the last, I don't know, probably 25 years. But certainly in recent years, we see where we're landing. So even if it is a 13% to 18% reduction, as you're suggesting, Senator, I'm just wondering why, why it will likely be that other comparably, demographically comparable communities will be, you know, receiving more per student than Wakefield. And again, I use Reading, nothing against Reading, they certainly, they can use all the money they receive. But it's, it's quite a rub for, I think, a lot of taxpayers in Wakefield when we see those comparisons and the numbers just don't seem to align. And I received your presentation, I know what you're saying, and we can push that out certainly. But the bottom line is, if you look just dollars to donuts every year, these other communities are getting more than Wakefield is.
So again, I'm happy to walk you through that presentation again. It does explain exactly what is happening with the formula and what are things that we can do that are productive to try to make further changes beyond what the Student Opportunity Act, you know, made previously. And, you know, the delegation will continue to work with the school committee and the superintendent and obviously members of the council, you know, going forward on, you know, on school funding equity issues and adequacy issues. I think the bottom line right now, the most important thing is we're just going to be trying to do everything we can to protect as much of our school funding as we can. You know, we're into an unprecedented crisis here. And, you know, it's all hands on deck to try to, you know, balance this budget, to try to get as much federal help as we can, to tap the state's stabilization fund responsibly, to manage all of the unbelievable demands that are coming in from, you know, from many low-income families, from seniors, from our small businesses. Our nonprofits are in crisis right now as well. Our higher education institutions, public higher ed are struggling. Our early ed providers are in crisis right now as well. So there's a lot of things we're going to have to work through. We're going to do that, but I can assure you that local aid and Chapter 70, you know, is going to be, continue to be a top priority. And we'll, you know, we're going to do the best we can for Wakefield and, you know, and other, other communities.
Thank you for that. And I would just say on behalf of the Wakefield taxpayers to our entire delegation, and Senator Lewis, and you're uniquely positioned as Chair. It's important. And if it's a matter of the formula netting out the numbers it does, then it's a matter of revisiting the formula to figure out why that's happening to us. Because it does feel like we're often getting shortchanged in that regard. So I would ask, you know, our entire delegation to please understand that that, that it's a real priority for members of our community, certainly. Do we have any other questions of anyone else of the council? All right, seeing none, then I thank you, Senator Lewis. I thank you, Representative Wong, and I thank you, Representative Libra Garabedian, for your time tonight. It's really important that we have these connections, especially these days. And, you know, we hear a lot at the federal level, we hear a lot at the state level, but so much goes on at the local. And it's that partnership, that collaboration that we can have that really makes a real impact on the lives of our residents. So thank you all for taking the time this evening. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Thank you all for your service.
Be well.
All right. So, and again, we thank our delegation for taking the time this evening to answer a lot of questions and give us those updates. With that, I will entertain a motion to bring us back to reopening the public hearing for Bavia 2 LLC. If I can have someone tweet to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Can move by Counselor May, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Again, we'll do a roll call vote. Vice Chair Santos.
Aye.
Counselor May.
Yes.
Counselor Bott.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Counselor Smith-Galvin.
Yes.
Counselor Dinoco.
Yes.
And Counselor Dombrowski. Yeah. So with that, I will call the public hearing open then for Bavia 2 LLC. And I believe this evening we have Attorney Brian McGrath on behalf of the LLC. So good evening, Mr. McGrath.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to the council.
You could please present your, your client's request to the council.
I'd be happy to. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, thank you, members of the council. For the record, Brian McGrath, I represent Bavia 2 LLC, which is the owner of property situated at 950 Main Street in Wakefield. I'm sure you're well aware of this property. It's right in the heart of downtown Greenwood. It's often known as and referred to as Fast Freddy's, where there's a gasoline sales operation and a little bit of a retail operation occurring there. With me tonight is Luis Diaz and Jay Patel. They're here as representatives of the ownership. So they're logged in and ready, willing and able to participate and answer any questions that council members may have. The purpose of our application is to amend an existing flammable license pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 148, Section 13. This location has had a flammable license since 1971. It is currently licensed for 18,000 gallons of gasoline storage. And we're requesting that the council increase that amount to 24,000 gallons. Bavia is in the process of renovating the property with significant upgrades to the property, which will include new pavement, new signage, gasoline storage tank capacity, as I've mentioned. Granite curbing will be installed throughout the property in significant enhancements in landscaping. The landscaping improvements will actually include the installation of over 200 or approximately 200 plantings on the site. As part of their renovations project, Bavia was required to appear before the Zoning Board of Appeals. And they had to have two petitions approved by the zoning board in order to move forward with the renovations. Those occurred. We've given you copies of the decisions of the board in that regard. And they voted affirmatively on both requests with the conditions of enhanced landscaping and new signage and improvements to the building and to the layout of the site and also an entire repaving of the site. The fire chief has given an opinion on this. And I see Chief Sullivan is actually in attendance at the meeting. But we've worked closely with Chief Sullivan on this application. And the Mass General Law's Chapter 148, Section 13, prior to appearing before your council, Chief Sullivan is required to sign off on the application and either recommend approval or denial. Chief Sullivan has recommended approval of this application. And he's actually submitted a letter of support, which was also included in the packet that we provided to the town council. We believe, as Chief Sullivan does, by increasing the underground storage capacity in the gasoline, it's actually going to create an improvement in that it will not require as many delivery trucks to frequent the Greenwood area. There's no anticipated increase in sales, but it will actually reduce the number of trucks that make deliveries, which would be a benefit to the neighborhood as a whole. That, I guess, concludes my presentation. Mr. Chair, if there's any questions of the council, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Mr. McGrath. And I apologize to you and your client, and thank you for the indulgence of waiting to be called this evening. With that, do we have any questions of the council? Seeing none. Actually, Counselor Smith-Galvin.
Thank you so much. I just wonder, it looked like the original license was granted in 1971. I'm just wondering at that time, why 18,000? Was that just the size of tankers at that time or, um, do you know?
I would imagine, Counselor, that the 18,000 gallons was the underground storage capacity. So those are the, those are the underground tanks that are on site. And I think, you know, probably that's all they required at that time or asked for.
Because the land hasn't, I mean, the footprint of the land hasn't changed.
No, there's nothing being added on. The layout of the site will change a little bit. They're going to, you know, you're probably familiar with the site. It's kind of awkward right now and you're pulling, the pumps are on an angle. And it doesn't really flow too well. So part of the process with the zoning board, they've actually added one pump and they're straightening the pumps out. And that way there'll be less, you know, there won't be any queuing on the street. It will actually allow people to maneuver on the site better. But I honestly have no idea why they only
It's just a curiosity thing. The straightening things out will be helpful there. And having less tankers come through is also a benefit to the neighborhood.
And the landscaping is, the landscaping commitment, I think, is going to be a great enhancement for the site.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Smith-Galvin. Do we have any other questions of the council? Okay, I'm seeing none here. I know, Mr. McGrath, when you look at that site, it is, there is a lot of concrete, a lot of asphalt. So the idea of softening that site with landscape, with softscapes, with landscaping, would be a tremendous improvement to that area. It's, it's, it's a pretty significant intersection in Greenwood. And it, there's just concrete everywhere, basically. So can you maybe just briefly touch on how you arrived at the design plan that you did for the landscaping and what it'll, how it'll feel to residents who might go by it once it's completed? How it'll feel different?
Yes, well, I've, I submitted a landscape plan as part of the package, Mr. Chair. And that was a plan that was derived through the hearing process with the, with the Zoning Board of Appeals. They always are very concerned with landscaping. One of the things that they're also requiring is granite curbing around those landscape aisles to define them. So what, I think what residents in Greenwood can anticipate is at the corner of Main Street and Oak Street, where the current freestanding sign is, that sign will be the same size, same height. It's going to be modernized a little bit compared to what's, what's there now. And there will be significant landscaping within that area of the signage. And then as you go further into the neighborhood from Main Street down Oak Street, on the right-hand side is going to be another significant landscape island that will be installed. And the other condition that the zoning board put on this project is all of those landscaped areas have to be irrigated with irrigation system so that, that they will not, you know, out in the sun, they won't die. And there's also an operation and maintenance plan that the plantings have to be maintained. And any of the plantings that might die over time, as usually happens, will have to be replaced on a continual basis. So I think with the granite curbing that's going to be installed in the site, with the landscaping, it will be a significant improvement. Also, on the building, there was some old signage that faced Oak Street. There's a requirement that that's all going to be removed. And the, in the facade of the building will be prepared. There's also been designations for adequate snow storage during the snow season and then requirements that when those snow storage areas fill up, the snow will be removed from the site to preserve the parking.
And I think that that's significant. Oftentimes with these projects, things are planted and then they might die off. And then over the years, you have less and less landscaping, you know, as a result. And so I do know that it went into a good amount of detail about the annual maintenance and requirements there in the packet that had been provided. I think ZBA ordered that, I believe. But I would say that knowing Greenwood residents who comment on that area, being able to soften the look of that, that intersection would be really, a really significant good neighbor gesture by your client, certainly. Any other further comments or questions? All right, seeing none, then I will open up. Do we have any public comments or participation on this, as this is a public hearing? Madam Clerk, has anyone checked in with you? Or do we have anyone that may have joined us from the public that wishes to speak? If you could just unmute yourself.
Yeah, no one that I'm aware of, Chairman.
All right. And do we have anyone from the public? All right, hearing no one then from the public, I will first then entertain a motion to close this public hearing. And then we'll proceed with a vote to follow.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Counselor May, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Roll call vote, Vice Chair Santos.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Counselor May.
Yes.
Counselor Dinoco.
Yes.
Counselor Smith-Galvin.
Yes.
And Counselor Bott.
Yes.
Okay. And Chairman Dombrowski, yes. So we've now closed the public hearing portion. And I will now entertain a motion for the approval as requested by the applicant.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinoco. Do I have any discussion of this body? All right, hearing and seeing none. And the motion before you is the approval as presented by Mr. McGrath on behalf of Bavia 2 LLC and as included in your packet. And then a roll call vote, Vice Chair Santos.
Aye.
Counselor May.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Counselor Bott.
Yes.
Counselor Dinoco.
Yes.
Counselor Smith-Galvin.
Yes.
And Chairman Dombrowski, yes. And a vote of seven to zero that was in parry unanimously. Thank you very much to Bavia 2 LLC and continued success with your business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Counsel. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight on the agenda is COVID-19 updates. We did receive some updates We did receive some updates certainly from our delegation, really important updates at that. We are going to bring the discussion even more local now, and I invited this evening our emergency management director, Thomas Walsh, as well as our health director, Ruth Clay, and our Board of Health as well to offer any comments with Director Clay regarding where we are currently and where we see ourselves headed going forward. It's incredible to think that it was just over a month ago that we had Director Clay and Director Walsh before the council talking about the very preliminary aspects of this, I guess, about a month and a half now, and a lot has changed since that time. So with that, I'll turn it over maybe first to emergency management director, Thomas Walsh. Director Walsh.
Good evening, Counsel. Right now, we're doing a good job as far as protecting our people, getting a PPEL to all of our public safety first responders. We haven't had any issues. We had some issues early, but we'll do that. The state has freed up a lot of supplies to us, and I usually, at least twice a week, I've been getting orders in from the state. We've, you know, our main goal here is the safety and health of our people, which we've been doing. We did have that mask giveaway for the over 60 and the people with underlying conditions. That went well. I'm sure Mr. Mayo or Ruth will talk about that. As far as the reimbursements, FEMA is going to reimburse us 75% for what we've put out. We've got a stock date of 1/20/20, and that'll go until they tell us it's over. Part of that thing should be the schools. So I think for down the road, depending how long this declaration is in, I have a feeling it's going to be continued. We may be able to roll all the school costs maybe on a 75% reimbursement, because no matter what they come up with, there's going to be an expense to it. You know, you spoke about some of the things tonight, but hopefully, we'll be able to get that back. I'm waiting on a template from FEMA now, within the next two weeks. We've started to gather some figures together. I assume it's going to be more than one, maybe more than one or two requests for monies back from the feds. We've already done our initial stuff. We put what they call an RPA, a request for public assistance into them. We've set up our accounts. Myself and Joe Conway are the contacts for FEMA, and we'll do that. As far as MEMA, there is one program now that we're looking at getting reimbursement from the state. Other things, probably not so much. I'd be surprised, but, you know, who knows? Because I don't know if the state will have the money, depending on if on the next round phase they have through the feds, then goes into the state, which then trickle down to the municipalities. But right now, I think we're in good shape. I think the supplies have been rolling in pretty well. I mean, basically, we're just trying to keep ahead of it. We've been giving out things, food pantry, our own housing, all that stuff at the schools. Anybody who needs anything, we've been trying to get them, either through myself or Ruth. We've been giving them as much as they need. So I think as far as the town itself, I think we're in good shape. That's where we're at.
Great, thank you very much. And if we could hold questions until after Director Clay speaks, and then we can entertain questions of the council. So with that, good evening, and welcome Director Clay as well.
We are at 209 cases as of today. A great deal of those unfortunately are in the nursing homes. We do have two large nursing homes here, and we are experiencing the same thing the rest of the state is with the nursing homes. We have a fantastic system in place for case management and contact tracing, including the school nurses who are helping as well as our board members, one of whom is retired public health nurse, and all three are nurses and are able to do a lot of, some of the wet leg work. So we're in really good shape as far as that goes, which I'm really, really pleased about. The C, because we are part of a health district with Melrose, we received $100,000 upfront over a month ago, so essentially 50/50. That, so we're getting money upfront. We don't have to get reimbursed for it. It is paying for part of the rooms at a hotel that we have available for anybody who needs isolation and quarantine away from their families. It's paying for overtime and funding to pay for the contact tracing and case management. It's also paying for the masks. So we are, we're in a really good position as far as assuming we, the city, the town gets reimbursed 75%, and I'm paying the other 25% upfront. So if everything goes right, it won't cost us anything in the end. So Tom and I are working closely together, getting the masks in. We're planning another very large mass distribution. Details to be coming as soon as the masks are in hand, which hopefully will be tomorrow.
Great, well, thank you so much, Director Clay, for that update. And before I open up to questions, I believe we have one or two members of the Board of Health on this Zoom as well. Do either of you have anything to add to what has already been said from the Board of Health perspective?
Oops. Hi, Ed. There we go. Sorry, my Zoom is not saving. Anyway, so this is Laurel. I just echo Ruth's comments. I think that the team has worked really well. We do have this new order that has been rolling out. I think, you know, I think it's going to take a little time for people to completely get the message, but certainly, I feel like the whole town has really gotten the message on social mitigation. I mean, mitigation for this with social distancing and face coverings. We may need to clarify the messaging. I think there's so much legalese in the order that some people aren't actually reading the order. So I saw, you know, more comments about people being mad that other people were outside without masks, and that's not what the order was about. So if you all are hearing anything about clarity in that communication, if you could please get back to us, I would very much appreciate it. But I can't be more proud of the staff on the board. Well, I'm not just on the board, but in the department has just been amazing.
Thank you so much for that. Do we have any other comments from the Board of Health? I do think, Director Clay, perhaps one just point of clarification for folks is that, that order that was issued again through the Board of Health, it does not require face masks, it requires a face covering. So that could be a bandana, a t-shirt, anything of the sort, and it's only required, as I read the order, when someone is entering an essential business or for anyone that's working within an essential business. It does not relate to things like people walking in the streets, for example, or anywhere else aside from that sort of indoor or direct contact. Do I have that understanding correct?
Sorry, I was muted. No, you are exactly correct. That's correct.
I believe, and just that's an important point, I think, for people to understand, because a lot of people are asking, where do I get the masks? How do I get the masks to be in compliance? Masks are certainly one way to do it, but it's the facial covering of whatever sort is available to you. I think it's an important distinction for people to understand, again, in order from the Board of Health. With that, I know Counselor Chines had a question, so Counselor Chines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Walsh and Ms. Clay and Board of Health, thank you so much for everything that you're doing. I know you've all been working incredibly hard and, you know, really grateful for sort of the time, the energy, the wisdom that you've brought to the community. And I know Ruth, that I'm sure Melrose is as well, for your leadership. Had two questions I wanted to ask, and the first one, you know, really is focused more on kind of where do we go from here? So, you know, certainly, I don't think that Massachusetts is at the peak yet. I think we're sort of still in the midst of it, so we have a ways to go. But, you know, as we're starting to see different communities think about sort of reentry and loosening some of the restrictions, I'm curious as to what sort of criteria, what kinds of milestones would you both be looking for to try to drive some of those decisions in sort of an evidence-based way that will help make sure that we continue to keep people safe?
So, okay, I think some things, we need to be very clear about something, that the peak, what we've been concerned about the peak is so that our healthcare system can manage the number of patients at once. It doesn't decrease the number of people who will become ill or pass away. It decreases the, it decreases the amount of time, so it's not this big peak all at once. Now, the hospitals in Massachusetts have done a fantastic job at ramping up, including Melrose Wakefield Hospital, who added 50% more beds. So the hospitals in Massachusetts, including Melrose Wakefield, are in really good shape as far as not even close to being full occupancy. And that's what the peak was all about. Flattening the curve does not decrease the total number of cases. It just spreads the cases out over a longer period of time. And actually, there, other states have been loosening things up, but Massachusetts, the governor still has an order in place, and we can't be less strict than the governor's order. As a matter of fact, Somerville just became even more strict, requiring masks even if you're outside walking or walking your dog or whatever. So we can be strict or but not less strict, and Wakefield will not be opening up anything until the governor's order is lifted at least.
So I guess I understand that, but I think we still then do have, you know, a decision to make as to whether we sort of follow the governor's order, or do we, you know, do we, you know, move in a place where we actually are more strict? And so, again, I sort of reposed the question, are there specific milestones or data points that, you know, based on your experience and what you're seeing, would you would suggest to be used to sort of drive some of that decision-making going forward?
Well, we're always looking at the data and the number of cases and where the cases are and what type of cases, whether they're community spread versus a known contact. We're not at a place yet where we would consider reopening things.
So again, and I apologize for pressing, but, you know, are there specific things that you would look at? Like, you know, are there specific milestones or, you know, if you look at sort of the trend in infections, is there something that would, you know, put you in a place where you'd say it's time to start thinking about, you know, some sort of reentry plan for the community?
Well, we are always thinking about reentry plans, and there are some models out there. There aren't data points and criteria because we've never done this before. So we're looking at data, but the governor has one set of data points that he's decided to use, which is a decrease of cases over two weeks, but even that doesn't say how much of a decrease, a 10% decrease, a 1% decrease. He's just saying a decrease. So there aren't, there aren't specific formulas in place because this is all brand new. So we look at the data as it comes and as we go through, and the governor will make his decision, and then we can make a decision based off of that. But we are looking at the national data and the state data all the time.
Great, thank you. Second question for, again, both of you. Could you speak a little bit about, you know, the kinds of sort of communication and cooperation that you have between different departments and towns? So, you know, how, you know, how are we kind of coordinating work between the Board of Health, you know, the police, the fire department, the council on aging? How are those sort of conversations happening? Is there a process that you've put in place to try to drive that?
Steve, do you want to answer that? Steve, Mayo? Okay.
I can unmute myself, too. We do, we're in constant conversation every day. I would say that Ruth and I and Tom and I, Joe and I talk multiple times a day. We have department head meetings every week where everyone's included to see where we're going. Of course, there's more going on between DPW, police and fire, and emergency management, and Tom, and maybe some of the, you know, administrative departments. But for my money, I think that they're all working very well. Council on Aging as well is working very closely with us on every issue. So I don't know, Ruth, Tom, please jump in and don't be shy. I want to hear from you, so go ahead.
I would say that our cooperation-- If it's on the ball-- People were preparing, had 16 to 20 people up to the senior center, mostly department heads, you know, loading the mask into bags and trying to get ready for the distribution. I speak with almost every department head daily. People can't do enough. I mean, our town is a number one in that thing. But I do want to make a comment on this. I know Counselor Chines was asking. Even when we go back to some type of normalcy, we will be still social distancing and everything. This thing, I'd say we're still four to six weeks out before the governor probably does something, but even when he does, we're going to be probably that six-foot limit on social distancing with people. I think there's going to be a thing with the restaurants. There'll probably be maybe no more than 50% capacity. I mean, because you think of all the effort and sacrifice we've made already in the past two, two and a half months, we'd throw it all away if we went back to that normal thing. We don't have a vaccine. I'm going to tell you the truth, I'd say we're probably a year away from reality. So I think for the next year, we're going to, we'll probably have some normalcy come back in, but it's not going to be like we were used to, not prior to the COVID-19. So people just have to prepare and say, look, here's how it's going to be. And then until we get a vaccine and then someone from the CDC finally says, hey, you know, something, I think we've got this made, then we can probably rest easy. Right now, we still have to be vigilant at all times, diligent in our duties. I think that's just what the standard thing's going to be.
Thank you, appreciate that. Sorry, Mr. Mayo, just to clarify sort of your comments. So from a coordination standpoint, so it sounds like that's really sort of coming out of your office and kind of phasing down to each of the department heads, is that fair?
That is fair, but the other department heads, I mean, Ruth and, like I said, I talk to them every day. I don't micromanage what they're doing every minute. They're out seeing the departments all the time, but I would say that is fair within a structure, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chines. Counselor Dinoco had a question. Counselor Dinoco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a real quick question regarding the face masks.
Face covering.
When the original order went out, it was geared towards all establishments, eating establishments, that their employees were aware of the face masks when they were conducting business? Is that correct?
Face coverings.
Face coverings.
It's not directed at restaurants, it's directed at all workspaces.
So any workspace that is conducting business?
Correct.
Their employees are supposed to wear masks?
Correct.
Now, ignorance on my part, how were they all notified of their requirements for all of their employees?
So the only distribution list we have is for the food establishments. So all the food establishments were sent an email Friday morning, and for everybody else, it's been through social media. We're not out looking for people or going into people's places of business. We understand that it will take time for people to know about it and get face coverings. You know, we're not out there looking. Uh, you know, we're, we're not out there looking for a problem. We're out, we're trying to make a point and, and have everybody wearing the face coverings because unfortunately, as much as we tried to encourage, cajole, beg, um, there was still a significant number of people, um, that weren't wearing any kind of face coverings. I walked into grocery stores and, and saw people all over the place, not the employees, but the public that were walking around, not wearing face coverings, and that's, that's very unfair to the employees who, who are there and have to be there.
Okay, so, so you answered my question. So, I'm not asking that we police every establishment. It's, they should know that there's, in order for them to do business, they're required to have a face mask on.
Face covering.
And then if we, if we enter the business, we in turn are supposed to have that mask on as well.
Correct. Covering, face.
But that's the message that I, I'm not sure if the public's getting, and I'm not sure if all the establishments are, but again, I'm not asking you to police that. I just didn't know how they were all being recognized.
As people call if they have questions, uh, we've had a number of businesses call, uh, and ask, how does this apply to us? And we, we answer every single one of them, everybody that calls. Again, it, it takes time to, you know, we also, we're trying to be judicious with the Code Red system, we don't want to be sending out messages all the time. So, we're trying to strike a balance.
Okay.
Overusing the system, yet keeping everybody informed.
The Board of Health is doing an outstanding job, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dinaco. I, I know, um, Director Clay and, and the Board of Health, um, part of the order that you've issued requires that, uh, any establishments have signage for all patrons if, when they're coming in, to be sure that they know that they need to have a face covering. Is there any, any outreach or, or awareness campaign going on there? I, obviously, it's not about policing, but it's about just making sure we spread the word to businesses, because candidly, um, I think a number of, of, of folks have been surprised by some businesses that don't have employees wearing face coverings, and it's just good business to do it. So, I would plead with the business community to make sure you're in compliance because it, it can be unsettling for, for your customers if they, if they arrive, especially at a food establishment, for example, but anywhere, that it may be open and not seeing employees that, that have their faces covered. Could you maybe talk a little bit about the, the steps that you're taking, not policing, but instead making sure that that word is out there to our business community?
Uh, Steve, do you want to talk more to this because we, with our communications manager director?
Uh, yes, we will. We, we will talk more. I think what was interesting in this whole face covering for the public issue was really many members of the business community that came to us that asked us to make sure we did that because they were uncomfortable with patrons coming out of it. So, um, I think for the most part, they have been, um, pretty well notified by now. Uh, we did make a decision in this case because there had been so many, um, reverse 911s that had gone out, and that might not go to the business owners anyway, because some of them might not be, um, you know, residents on the list or not on it, so, uh, but we will, uh, see about putting more information out there.
And I think given this, it provides another forum to get the information out, to spread the word, because it's, there's not one means of communication that we've found that have worked, has worked to get everyone informed on, on any issue. So, it's just reinforcing that, but it's such an important piece and something so easy for all of us to do, too. Um, all right, so with that, before we move on to our first responders, I do just want to take a moment to, to really acknowledge the incredible job that Director Walsh has been doing, that Director Clay and the Board of Health have been doing, and Mr. Mayo have been doing. And when you would talk about this kind of command center.
Tell people with their hands up.
Oh, my apologies. I, I'm sorry, WCAT is, um, emailing me these. So, Counselor, all right, so I'll finish my point, then I'll turn on to these, to, um, the questions that we have up. So, I, I, this, we really have a command center structure, it feels like. Mr. Mayo, constant communication with Mr. Walsh and, uh, with, with Director Clay, so thank you for that. Um, and I, I know when I speak to Mr. Mayo multiple times a day, and he's always either coming off of a call or going on to a call with someone, so there is a real team approach to that, and I think it makes a huge difference. We've been out ahead of a lot of other communities, I think, with the, the strong talent that we have, you know, at, at the helm here, so I thank for that. Uh, with that, I believe Vice Chair Santos has a question. Apologies, Vice Chair Santos, you have a floor.
I had raised my hand, but then I lowered it for time purposes, but, um, I'll just, I'll ask my question. For the face coverings and, um, I had someone come to me on this beautiful day, a few days ago, talk about, again, the lake, you know, our beautiful lake, the bane of our existence right now, that you can't socially distance walking the lake. So, and people aren't wearing face coverings walking the lake. So, and Ruth, I should absolutely know this, and I'm so sorry, you guys have been, um, you know, to the wall, you and Tom, working so hard. Does the Board of Health have like a, uh, frequently asked questions or, or document that people can go to? I mean, I don't know how to inform the uninformed that if they're walking three feet away from someone, they should have a mask of covering on.
Uh, we don't have an FAQ, but that's a great idea. We can put together an FAQ and put it on the website.
Awesome. And just, just something we can maybe point someone to, but, um, when you have a moment, which I'm sure you don't have any, but thank you so much for all your work. I, I know how, we've, we talked about this years ago, you know, just imagining things, and I don't think anyone could ever imagine this, so thank you both.
Can I just put one thing in here? Um, and I appreciate everybody's kudos and all that, but I really need to point out that our public health nurse and school nurses are doing a really fantastic job, seven days a week, every week, school vacation, not school vacation, um, and they're just doing it, they're really working hard and putting their heart and soul in it, and I really want to make sure that they get acknowledged.
Great, certainly, and we send our appreciation as well. Thank you for that. Uh, I believe next on the list is Counselor Smith-Galvin, Counselor Smith-Galvin, if it was yours.
Ruth, and to the entire team, I know our bodies are working really hard. Two, two quick questions, maybe one just to follow up to the conversation we just had about communications and signage. It seems to me that it helps, I was at Shaw's today, and they have the signs posted, um, but it seems to me it helps that this says by order of Wakefield or by order of Wakefield Board of Health, that it doesn't put the, so much on the business owners, that everybody is doing it. So, that would just be a suggestion, Steve, for, um, Jen McDonald to help out with communications and maybe get some conforming signs that can be hung everywhere. Um, my other question is on Code Red, I understand that we don't want to overuse reverse 911, but when I went in and I signed up for Code Red, I'm getting the phone calls, but I also downloaded the app, and I find that every community around us is using the app pretty effectively and where or not. And so, I'm wondering, I've never seen anything come out from Wakefield on the app, and that's a good way not to just follow our towns, but, but other towns. And I wonder whether, um, that's a functionality that we don't have, um, or maybe Mr. Walsh could speak to it, because I think it's something we should look into.
No, the app is available, you know, we can put that out there. Basically, it's been our, uh, our thing, just we notify you by, by phone, but if, uh, if people are more, uh, apt to use the app.
I think it's just a redundancy with you, you know, it's just another way to, to get people, and I think a lot of people are on their phones.
Yes, we could, we could do it, I'll work into it, I'll, I'll speak with Jen, and I'll speak with our, uh, our people, our liaison between us and Onso.
Right, thank you. Thanks for everything you're doing as well.
Great, and thank you, Counselor Smith-Galvin. Uh, moving on, next on the list, here's Counselor Butt, you have a floor.
Thanks, I, just a follow-up question, uh, and reiterating Ruth and your team and Tom and everyone's doing a great job, but with Code Red, do we know how many people in town have signed up for that? I'm just curious about, because I, that's what I worry about is the communications. I'm just wondering, do we have the numbers on that, Steve or Tom?
Yeah, I can get the numbers. Uh, I think we're, we're pretty well said, we had put out, uh, a, a number of informational things, Jen had put out, uh, multiple messages trying to get people to sign up, and, uh, and also the fire chief helps us with that as well. So, I, I don't think we have that as a problem. I have no problem using, uh, Code Red anytime. Uh, it, we, uh, we pay them a pretty good amount of money each year, and so, uh, and contractually, I don't think we've ever gone over, it hasn't processed anything extra. So, uh, but it, it's like, you know, you don't want to give them the same message every day, uh, but when there's something important, you want to pull out there. Uh, I will look into the app thing, because if people want to put it on their phones, that's fine, I have it online, but you know, I need it online. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll check that out, but, uh, the messaging, uh, I, I think, truthfully, since we, we've, uh, put Jen McDonald on the team, she's done a fantastic job of getting our messaging out to the public. I mean, uh, kudos, she's, she's made us, you know, 10 times better than we were, I mean, we had a pretty good thing, but she has just put us into the 21st century, you know.
So, it would, so I wholeheartedly agree, I think Jen's done a great job. It would just be nice to know how many households that's going to. Um, just, I, I think that's like important to know, and as we talk about some, like what the Board of Health does, just the plan of, of Jen, you know, doing Board of Health regulations, like she does our bylaws and regulations, Steve, just to make sure that that, as Paul said earlier, just gets out there, um, because, you know, I'm a broken record, not everyone gets the item, not everyone is on Facebook, and so I just want to make sure that we're getting as many people as we can.
I can get you that, I'll get you that number tomorrow.
Thanks, Tom.
That's great, thank you so much, Director Walsh, on that. Do we have any further questions of the council? If not, again, uh, thank you, Director Walsh, thank you, Director Clay, for the tremendous work you've been doing for our community, we really, really appreciate it. I should point out that, um, Director Walsh is, is definitely a part-time employee, but I think he's more than, than earned his salary in recent weeks, and Mr. Mayo can speak to that, he's everywhere, all the time, so thank you for that, we appreciate it. With that, I'll move on, next on to, uh, another key component to, uh, our handling of, of this, this pandemic, and that's our first responders. And so, this evening, I've invited Chief of Police, Scory, and, uh, Fire Chief Sullivan to be here this evening. Um, our first responders have an incredibly, incredibly dangerous job every day, it's exponentially harder these days. Uh, so with that, um, good evening, uh, both chiefs, and perhaps Chief Scory, if you wouldn't mind just giving the, the council, um, a little bit of an overview about what things have looked like from the police side, and, and how the, the town can be supportive of, of, of your work.
Uh, well, thanks for inviting me this evening. I'm happy to report that all of our personnel currently are healthy, which is, um, when you think about it, it's probably a miracle, but they are all healthy. Uh, we've provided our people with all the personal protective equipment that they need, gloves, masks, goggles, um, and as far as public support, we've received some plastic face shields from some, uh, individuals who made them on their own, and several businesses in town, so that's been great, it's, uh, great equipment to have. Uh, we've set some policies in place for our people to help protect themselves and to eliminate any cross-contamination within the, in, within the department and from the outside. At the beginning of the shifts, the officers clean their cars and their workstations, and then they do the same at the end of their shifts as well. Uh, we've had six officers tested so far, and that was due to contact with positive cases. I'm happy to report that all six tests came back negative, which is great. Uh, just a small sample of some of the things that we've done within the department to try and keep our people healthy. Uh, we've gone to electronic roll calls, uh, the officers only come in the station one at a time to do reports, we have cruiser assignments so that we don't have a, a large number of people sharing the same car, uh, there's no shift swaps, all prisoners are transported by the prisoner van, we don't put any prisoners in individual cruisers. Uh, we take as many reports as we can by phone, we're trying to deter people from coming into the station for things, matters that can be handled by telephone. And we're no longer processing license to carry firearms, which is a big component of the, the number of people that came into the station, and we've a temporary hold on that until things subside. Uh, one curveball that was thrown at us was the district court shutdown, the, uh, the judges and the clerks are still in the court, but the doors are locked. So, we've taken on their administrative work, so if somebody needs a restraining order, harassment protection order, they come to us, we process the paperwork, and then Court Prosecutor Dave Morrells, he'll get on the phone, he'll call the court, and we get all that squared away with the, uh, with it, with the judges inside the courthouse. Realizing that this is a stressful time for people and their children, especially the children, uh, we worry about them, this is, uh, something no one's ever seen before. We've tried to create some fun activities for the kids, try and bring a little joy to their life. So, we have a coloring contest going on right now, and right now, we have over 70 entries. I question whether some of these were actually done by children, they're pretty good, some of them, but, uh, we'll roll with it. So, that contest actually ends at midnight tonight, and we'll be picking, picking multiple winners, and we'll determine that by age group. Uh, the winners will get a little drive-by by a couple of police cars. Uh, some of our officers are telling bedtime stories on Facebook, which seems to be a big hit with people, and, uh, we've done a few small parades for kids who had birthdays and, and couldn't celebrate with a party, and those all seem to be great, and it's just, it's the least we can do for people in these difficult times.
Thank you so much for that, Chief. Um, and before we take any questions, I'll next introduce Chief Sullivan from the fireside. Good evening, Chief Sullivan.
Good evening, Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, okay. Uh, first of all, um, I just want to acknowledge all the help we've received from the Board of Health and, um, the emergency manager, uh, regarding, uh, this crisis. We do have a very good relationship with both, and, uh, look forward to working with them in the future. Uh, the Wakefield Fire Department stands ready to respond and assist any citizens stricken by COVID-19. We continue to work closely with our EMS partners, Cattaldo Ambulance, um, who have demonstrated on a daily basis their professionalism during this historic pandemic. I can't give those people enough credit, uh, they are, uh, really are our partners in EMS. As your Fire Chief, I am extremely proud to witness devotion of Wakefield's police, firefighters, and EMS providers in dealing with the COVID crisis. Wakefield's first responders certainly look different with masks, medical gowns, gloves, and face shields, but our mission provide emergency medical care to the best of our ability remains the same. Up until last week, um, we were actually a bit short of certain types of PPE, uh, especially the N95 masks, very happy to report that's been resolved, uh, basically through a combination of, uh, state distributions, local purchases, and quite a few private donations, as Chief, uh, Scory had mentioned, those shields are, are fantastic. We definitely use them, uh, they're definitely effective, keep them coming. Uh, just to illustrate the scope of, uh, the local crisis, if you will, in the last 12 days since April 15th, the Wakefield Fire Department has responded to 87 incidents where COVID-19 was either present or suspected. It was 87, 87 separate occasions where department members, uh, had the potential of being exposed along with responding police officers, Ian Cattaldo. I'm extremely happy to report, uh, that after six members have been tested, every single one of them have come back negative. Very interesting that they also had exactly six police officers, can't explain that. We're going to continue to do our job and continue to respond, and, um, that's basically it, and I'd open it up to questions.
Thank you, Chief Sullivan, and thank you for, for all that the, the Fire Department has been doing during this time, and Cattaldo as well, as you point out. So, with that, um, are there any questions of any members of the council?
Counselor Chines. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Chief Scory and Chief Sullivan. Um, I, I'm especially thrilled to hear that, that everyone in, in both the Police Department and Fire Department, uh, is healthy, that's, that's great news, and, uh, certainly hope with the, the PPE that you have on hand that that continues. Um, I also do want to say, uh, just as a, as a parent, um, I love the fact that many of our police officers have been reading bedtime stories, and, uh, certainly would encourage, uh, both chiefs, uh, I know Chief Sullivan, you read often at the Walton School, so certainly I hope we'll see maybe, uh, maybe a bedtime story from you guys soon. Um, did have a question that I wanted to ask, um, can you talk a little bit about what sort of, uh, the trends have been in terms of calls that you've been receiving over the last six weeks or so? Certainly, it sounds like you've had a lot of calls where there's been sort of a suspected COVID infection, but I'm curious as to, you know, overall trends in terms of what you're seeing both for, uh- both for, you know, fire calls, medical assistance calls, and police calls over the last month and a half.
Who would like to go first?
Take your pick.
Why don't we go to you, Chief Sullivan?
Okay. Well, I mean, we still, the vast majority of our calls have been medically related. It's kind of eerie that since the COVID crisis took hold, that our run, our overall run count has gone down, but the severity of the actual calls has gone up dramatically. We are still getting fires. We've had, we've been, if you, I'm not sure if you, how often you check the monthly reports, but we've had, we've had some significant or potentially significant fires in the last couple of months since the crisis broke out. So just something else that we have to juggle in with our regular, normal incident call. All the, all the calls that we go on COVID, I mean, we, they closely resemble flu calls. So basically, when I say that they confirm that they're potentially COVID cases, basically anytime we walk into a house and someone has flu-like symptoms, you have to assume that they have COVID. So that's probably the most common denominator, if you will, of all the calls that we go on, medically speaking.
Thank you, Chief Sullivan. And Chief Scory, do you have a sense of what the composition of calls has been like in recent weeks for the department?
I do. For us, it seems to be relatively the same. The one thing that we closely monitored that we were concerned with was the effect that the stay-at-home order would have with domestic cases. And what we found is that there's been a downward trend in the number of cases. So I know that the, the folks with the Wakefield Alliance Against Violence were concerned that maybe there was just an under-reporting of domestic cases. They, they felt that maybe victims were afraid to call the police because their abuser was home all the time. Well, historically, it's always been that when we get calls, it's during the heat of the battle. It's never somebody who, I won't say never, but very rarely for somebody to come to the station on their own and say, I have an issue going on at home. It's usually a neighbor calls while there's dispute happening, or the, the victim will actually call during the occurrence. So to put a positive spin on this, what I think is that the stay-at-home order may be having a positive effect on the family dynamic, that maybe people spending more time together is having, causing them to have a better relationship, if we can look at the glass half full.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next, we have Counselor Butt. Counselor Butt.
I just want to echo, thank you both, Chief Sullivan and Chief Scory, for all that you are doing. In particular, Chief Scory, I just wanted to thank you for partnering with the team from Saugus for the parade to Melrose Wakefield Hospital last week. As a trustee, I got a phone call from the CEO in the middle of the day saying, Wakefield has organized this parade, and there's people coming from all over, even towns that we don't serve. And so it was much appreciated by everyone in the hospital. So I just wanted to thank you for that. My neighbors that I told about it appreciated it as well. And then I also just wanted to say that there's a town council here who has a birthday in May. So if you're thinking of doing that, I think Jonathan might be the next birthday.
I'll make note of that. So the, if I could just comment about the cruiser parade. That originally, that was an idea of Lieutenant Anderson and two officers from Saugus. And originally, it was just going to be Wakefield and Saugus, and it should be a small tribute. And word got out, and we started getting calls from other towns that wanted to participate. And I have to tell you, when I showed up to the parking lot, I was overwhelmed with the number of cruisers that were there and ready to go. So as much as it might have been fun to watch, it was just as fun to participate in.
That's great. And Chief, thank you again to you and the entire department. I know that we've, we've mentioned this before, but again, people should be aware that they may be asked some additional questions when they call the department, and they shouldn't be surprised if they're asked to step outside of their home when, when police may arrive at the home. And again, this is for safety, and, and it's, it's really important. It's your PPE for our first responders is a top priority. It needs to be for all of us. And so again, thank you all for the work that you're doing. Thank you, your department chief, Scory. Thank you, department chief Sullivan and everyone involved, because it's, it's always a challenging job every day, as all of you know. And it's, again, just incredibly challenging these times. So we thank you for joining us this evening, answering our questions and giving this community update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number nine on the agenda, that is the disclosure of, the ethics disclosure related to Mr. Mullen. To just give just a very brief overview to anyone watching, Town Council Mullen has submitted this to us. This is not unprecedented. This body has received these in the past, and it basically relates to the fact that two articles that are on the warrant for this coming Springstown meeting are sponsored by the Savings Bank, and Mr. Mullen is a, is the director of the Savings Bank. So he has appropriately made that disclosure of a, as ethics rules require, and it's up to this body to be able to, you know, vote, to allow Mr. Mullen to advise us and, and the town as a whole in his capacity as town council as relates to Articles 24 and 25 of the warrant. And Mr. Mullen, if there's anything that I've missed, please, please fill in.
No, Mr. Chairman, that's it. Thanks. I'd appreciate the council's vote so that I can answer questions from the planning board. Mr. Reviss, should he have any? The Board of Library trustees, they may have some, and of course, at town meeting.
Great. Thank you for that. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to allow the request as submitted by Town Council Mullen, appears in your pack.
So moved.
Viced Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor May. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, then the motion before you is allowing the waiver as described in your packets by Mr. Mullen's submission and just now. A roll call vote, Vice Chair Santos.
Aye.
Counselor May?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dinoco?
Yes.
Commissioner Galvin?
Aye.
And Chairman Dombrowski, yes. So seven is zero, motion carried unanimously. I know, Mr. Mullen, there are already a number of questions for you, and so now we, we look forward to your answers.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you. Item number 10 on the agenda is the final, one of the final appointments we'll be making. This relates to the Historical Commission. For context, we had discussed last time the fact that the Historical Commission oddly did not have staggered terms, unlike most other boards, commissions, and committees. And based upon the conversation we had at the last meeting, I reached out to all the applicants, and I spoke to the chair, the Historical Commission chair as well, regarding assignments that everyone would be agreeable on in terms of staggering terms. I submitted this just for ease of reference to this body. I emailed this to you earlier today, but essentially, we could look at a scenario whereby we'd have three seats for terms expiring in 2023, so a three-year term, for Nancy Bertrand, Jean Molton, and Francine Harrington. We would have two seats for a term that would be expiring April of 2022, and then after that, it would become a three-year term in a regular cycle. We have two seats, and those, those could be Daniel Benjamin and Kathleen Driver. Then we have two seats for terms that would be expiring in April of 2021. And again, at that point, it would reset to a three-year term. That would be for Jennifer Oosterhout and Therese Frazier. So with that, I will entertain a motion to that effect with the understanding that when these seats are filled, they will be filled on the regular three-year cycle going forward.
I'm so moved, as noted by Ed.
Second.
Viced Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinoco. Is there any discussion?
Just a quick question, Mr. Chair. Was there any rationale for that split of the seats by, by sort of the names? Or just curious how we, we came up with that, that particular list?
Yeah, I mean, I heard back from six of the seven, and I, to everyone's, all applicants' credit, they were all very accommodating, I think. It ended up, the three, for the three-year terms had been on the longest. There's, there had been a seniority piece in that. And the two for the one-year term, one of them actually preferred the one-year term to give it a try out to see what she thought of it. So it, I was in close communication with everyone, and again, with the chair as well, to, to structure this. So there was, there was a lot of thought put behind these names.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. All right. So with that, we have a motion and a second for the appointments of the Historical Commission, as have been already identified and read aloud. I have Vice Chair Santos.
Aye.
Counselor May?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dinoco?
Yes.
Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Yes.
And Counsel, Chairman Dombrowski, yes, seven is zero. Congratulations to all who applied, and it was great. We were able to actually slot in all seven applicants. So that's, that's great, and we're on a good rotation now. All right. Moving on to item number 11, this is constituent issues. The opportunity for any members of the council to raise any issues that have been raised by constituents. No votes will be taken this evening, but the, the concern may end up as an item on a future agenda. So with that, do we have any constituent issues this evening? Seeing no hands in WCAT, I see nothing on your end. Is that correct? All right. So seeing nothing, we'll move on then to item number 12 on the agenda. Chairman's comments, I'll be brief on this. A number of months ago, I had identified to this council one of the goals being to try to have a collaboration with our neighboring communities, some sort of a regional approach to, to meet and discuss, and perhaps implement some ways that we can be most efficient, you know, collectively as, as a region as compared with individual communities, the whole being greater than the sum of its parts. With that, and it was originally intended to happen earlier this year, but then with what happened with the pandemic coming in, that was obviously sidelined for a bit. I have reached out with Mr. Mayo to our surrounding communities, and it seemed to be a very appropriate time for us to be able to convene with our, with our other communities in a similar way to how we convened the tri-board meeting back last fall. The goal, again, being to bring our counterparts together. So it would be, in essence, many delegations from the various, our surrounding communities, Lynnfield, Stonem, Saugus, Reading, everyone that, that touches and, and our borders. And with that, Mr. Mayo has been able to confirm that Tuesday, May 5th, would be a date that would work for the communities that surround us for this meeting. I'm calling it a regional summit, in essence. And it's basically an opportunity for us, I believe, to have a heavy COVID-19 focus to talk about a number of different things, including best practices, what, what we've learned thus far, where we see things going forward. And to the extent we can understand what each of the communities is thinking or where one community's head may be at, from anything from parks and how to handle closures and perhaps reopenings to dealing with events, you know, going forward, so that we have some, somewhat of a unified approach to it. It's not wholly different than what we see a lot of the Northeastern states doing as well. Again, coordinating our efforts, but I think it provides us a real opportunity here to be able to all collectively share best practices, talk about some of the issues we're facing. One issue that stands out to me would be testing, for example. And as testing becomes more, more widespread, I'd like to be able to see whether we collectively can work with other communities to set up something for our residents and theirs as well. Things like advocacy, you know, looking longer term. Again, collectively, we have a lot of demographically similar communities that we have. And there's an opportunity here to do that, or even things in terms of when we're, we're placing orders for things. Perhaps if we're buying in bulk and dividing the costs with other communities, we might find that you have a savings there. But there's a real synergy and a real opportunity there. My hope is that this will be the first of a number of meetings. I don't know when the next one would be, if it would be after a month or after a year, but I think the idea of coming together is a really important thing for us with, with our neighbors. So that is on Tuesday, May 5th. It is via Zoom. All members of the council are invited to participate. It's not a town council meeting, but it's, 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 again, it's a regional summit meeting, and each community will have a delegation that will be representing their interests, and will be able to share a lot of, I think, really good information, which is important. The other piece that I wanted to raise was actually connected to the COVID-19 updates that Mr. Mayo and I had really deferred to everyone else this evening. And that relates to the budget. You heard Senator Lewis earlier say that we could be looking at a 13% to 18% projected loss in revenue. Now, since we, our, our funding is rather limited from the state, it's not as impactful as it would be to some other communities, but certainly 13% to 18% still has an impact, no doubt. With that in mind, Mr. Mayo has, has already begun the process, as we touched upon last time, of looking at our budgets and figuring out, you know, maybe where we could realize some adjustments for fiscal 2021, so that we make sure we continue to balance things in these uncertain times. So with, with that, we had also talked about the forecasting. I provided that update last time from the Forecasting Subcommittee for Finance Committee. Mr. Mayo, back, I believe, on April 17th, provided all of us with very detailed analysis of the various scenarios that were considered from a financial forecasting standpoint. And I do anticipate that our next meeting will be going through and looking at some of the adjustments that can be made, Mr. Mayo, specifically to some of the budgets that you had already looked at. One of those in particular relates to the Economic Development Director. I know in my communications with, with Time Minister Mayo, that is one position, as it's not been filled yet, that there is some, some consideration for pause to table that temporarily until we have a better sense of where we land. Another area would be the, looking at capital projects and capital spending. Mr. Mayo is working closely with the capital planning to decide when, how we can go about bifurcating or kind of dividing up into two, the various requests that, that we anticipated to bring before to town meeting, so that we realize, you know, a bit of a, of a cash flow saving, at least temporarily. So with that, I'll turn over to Mr. Mayo, if you have anything to add relative to, to those, those considerations you've been giving in recent weeks.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did on, I think it was April 16th or April 17th, send out a, what my first pass was at how I thought we were going to look towards getting, coming forward with a balanced budget. This was after I did meet with the Forecasting Committee on the, with the Finance Committee Forecasting Committee. I think I put together, or actually, Dan Sherman, thank you, Dan Sherman, I forwarded three of his different analyses for everyone to look at. So at our next meeting, we'll be making a presentation with some suggested budget adjustments. And I say adjustments because we can come back in the fall and re-add some positions. And my goal is to go forward and get through the, hopefully, the June town meeting. Hopefully, we have it in June. Get through that with a balanced budget, or maybe a small surplus with really not knowing where state aid is going to be. Maybe we'll have a resolution from the state legislatures, maybe we won't. But we'll take into consideration those items. Maybe new growth will be where we hoped, maybe it won't. But there'll be a lot of different contingencies that we'll put in place. And with, with the knowledge and the ability that we know, and we come out in November, we can adjust. We can hopefully adjust up and spend more on capital and maybe fill some positions. Or on the alternative, maybe we're going to have to tap into some other areas to make things move a little closer. But at our next meeting, I plan to have a pretty comprehensive, of course, report on that, as well as, we have three unions that are basically at agreement that I'd like to present to the council as well, and we've spoken about that before. So all those numbers were included in my figures, and this will get us in, at least in shape when we go forward, or at least my, my suggestions, which the council will have to vote on going forward for town meeting in, hopefully, June.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo, and that, that preface ultimately brings us to the item that, that I wanted to highlight to everyone. In light of the direction that we may be headed relative to the Economic Development Director position, or even if we do end up filling that position, there is an opportunity there for us to also work to create an Economic Development Council. And if we end up not having the Economic Development Director position filled in the short term or over the next several months, my, my hope would be that we would be able to bring together some members of our, of our community, perhaps volunteers that have never volunteered. perhaps volunteers that have never volunteered before, and I'm talking, I know we have CEOs who live in town, we have a lot of business executives, we have a lot of business development folks who live in town. The idea of trying to bring together some of that expertise, first on a short-term basis, almost as like a task force would operate in order to help our, our businesses, our local businesses recover when the time is appropriate and perhaps longer term as well. Certainly, we can't have too many, too many hands helping out with, with business or economic development in the, in the future. So even if we were to fill this position, presumably we will in the future, this just provides a compliment to the work that he or she would be doing in that role. So I think it's a really unique opportunity for us to tap into talent. We often talk as a council about how many talented folks we have, you know, in our community. And I do think this would be a little bit more of a search because it's a very specific kind of pinpointed expertise we'd be looking at. A lot of other communities have done it, have done it successfully, and I think it provides us a real opportunity for a value add without costing us anything. And I think every time we can do that, it's a win-win for us. So with that, I do know that WCAT said that a few questions came in first from Counselor Butt, Counselor Butt.
Um, thanks Steve and Ed for saying that. So I will continue this conversation at our next meeting. I just want to go on record is that I, I think now more than ever, it's going to be important to fill that economic and wellness community position. You know, once, once we get through the next couple of weeks or months, building our local economy is going to be a priority for all of us. And we really, you know, what we've learned from the way that like the command center and Tom Walsh's run things, you really need a go-to person. And, and with that position is going to be that go-to person. The chamber's not able to do it on their own, you know, Steve has to run our town. We've all, you know, this is a volunteer for us. We really need a dedicated person who's going to help get those businesses and build our local economy. And I, I think it's foolish to postpone it. I think volunteers are great, we have great volunteers, but we need a dedicated staff person. And I really hope we get to continue. It's something that, you know, Paul and Ann have been talking about this since before I joined the board, but we, this now more than ever, I went for a walk last week on Main Street, living in Greenwood, and our businesses need help. I've had business, just like Paul, just like all of you businesses, owners have reached out to me. And we've been really lucky. I've sent them to Jason Lewis's office, I've sent them to Kate's office and they've helped them. But imagine if we had someone in town helping people do the applications, helping people look at those grants, helping people in town bring new businesses, helping our nonprofits, so helping the Boys and Girls Club, helping the Food Pantry apply for those grants. This position was supposed to be so big. And other towns have successfully done it, Bedford successfully done it, Melrose has a similar position. And so I just, I want to go and I, I understand you. I think we're going to have to relook at the whole budget. I know that there's going to be a cuts made. This is not a position that I think we should cut. I think now more than ever, it's going to be more important to really have someone dedicated looking at the nonprofits and the business in our, in our town. Because none of us have that time to dedicate and we, we have to do everything we can to get them back in shape.
Thank you, Counselor Butt, for that. Certainly. Counselor Chines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, I just wanted to, you know, echo Counselor Butt's comments. I, I wholeheartedly agree that I, I think this is a position that has more value now, given the economic climate we're in than, than perhaps it ever did before. You know, just to reinforce sort of two, two points on it. One is while an economic development council is a good idea and while, you know, I, I think it allows us to capture some of the intellectual capital and the ideas that people have in the community, it's hard for committees to actually execute on a lot of those ideas. And so having a person who's dedicated to doing this becomes all the more important for taking what I hope are a lot of really good, solid, innovative thoughts on how we can, you know, sort of move our town forward from a business and community development standpoint, and actually make sure that we can put those into practice. The second point that I just want to make is that I think this is also a unique opportunity for us to differentiate our community when it comes to bringing businesses into Wakefield. This is the type of role that some other communities have, but a lot don't. It's probably not the type of role that a lot of communities are going to be investing in. And I, I think given where we are from a fiscal health standpoint, and given the fact that I think there are other opportunities in the budget to make some reductions that don't involve layoffs. I, I do think that this is something that I hope we move ahead on, and I know we'll have a robust discussion at our next meeting. So thank you.
Indeed, you will. Yes, thank you, Counselor Chines. And Counselor Galvin was next, as Counselor Smith Galvin, apologies.
I definitely echo what Marion and Jonathan said. And when I think about it, I think it is the predictable thing to just cut this position, but I think that if we're one of the communities that has one during this, we're going to be really be able to be innovative and, and help our businesses. So I think there's going to be a lot of people looking to towns for doing different things. And I think having a position like this will allow us to be one of those towns that's the go-to, whether it's for grants or kind of innovative impact financing or whatever. So discuss it at the next.
Thank you for that. And that again was part of the reason you had to bring this up as to get, you know, some guidance going forward before our, our next meeting on that, but we will be certainly discussing it next time. I believe Counselor, actually Counselor Santos is next.
Um, yes. I agree with what everyone has said, including the suggestion that we tap into our citizens potentially to have a council. My concern with the council coming before the position is I would think that the person in the position is the, is the head and the council can give suggestions and they can work together. I, I didn't realize that this position was at risk of being dropped off. And I know that we're looking at a budget that's really tight until just in conversation with some folks today, because I do think this is one of those positions that really could save us money and could put us in a, in a direction that perhaps other towns around us aren't. So I would be happy to talk about the economic council, but I don't know that I see them as divergent paths. I think they could be parallel. So again, I think I look forward to the conversation I'm at the next meeting.
Great. Thank you, Vice Chair Santos. Do you have any, anyone else? I think just to clarify for everyone too, I don't know that anyone is, is looking to not have this position. It's just a matter of, of timing of it at this point. So Mr. Mayo, we could have some pencil sharpening on your end.
That sounds like my job.
And then, but, so my, but I think actually everyone, your comment, your feedback is really helpful at this meeting, because now next meeting, when we're going through here, Mr. Mayo has some good guidance and direction, you know, from, from this body, which is really important. So, so thank you for your important feedback that way. Item number, seeing no other questions. Item number 13 on the agenda is matters unanticipated for the agenda. Again, these are only matters that would require action by the town council, and they came up within the last 48 hours, so we couldn't have any proof and requirements. I've not been notified of any. Can I assume that there were none for this evening?
Mr. Chair, I just have a question that I, I wanted to bring up. And this is actually more of a question related to next, next meeting's agenda than today's. But, you know, whether it's in this bucket or the next agenda item, it probably bears mentioning. A couple of weeks ago, when we did vote to change the date of the town election, we started to have a discussion around our own councils reorganization, that it wasn't clear to me that we ever sort of reached a consensus on the steps that we wanted to take. And so I just wanted to bring that up again, just to get a sense of the, the seven of us as to you know, sort of what, you know, what the path forward is, given that, you know, the election otherwise would have been tomorrow, meaning we would have reorganized at our, our next meeting on May 11th, I believe. So again, just wanted to bring it up, just to get a sense of where the council was and, and, you know, how that bears, bears on our agenda for two weeks from now.
Well, my expectation with that, Mr. Chines, is it, it had come up and I had been looking at the calendar with, with Madam Clerk. I was anticipating having that on the next agenda for voting at the second May meeting. So this, the, not the next meeting, but the meeting after the reorganization would take place. That was what, what I anticipated to be the case. The sense, the sense that I got is people didn't want to wait till July, which I agree with. I especially agree with relative to that. So that, that was what I was, I was going to proceed forward on based upon the feedback that I'd received.
So can I ask why not May 11th? And I, I'm so, you know, July is one question, but it seemed like the question that we talked about was sort of the, the date we would have otherwise reorganized or July. I, I guess if we're talking about May 25th or whenever the date is, that seems like a random date.
I think it would, it would be a one meeting difference. The biggest issue being that I don't know where we'll be after with, after the governor's announcements later this week relative to this. I don't know whether we'll be zooming, whether we'll be in person. And no one since the last time it was raised has raised anything with me relative to it. So I put it in on the, the agenda in, on my end as, as the placeholder, because it seemed to make the most logical sense to get us through to that point. The next meeting, we have a number of, of budgets that we're looking to revise. So it didn't seem like the timing was appropriate. Next meeting, I expected the meeting that followed, which put us, I guess, one meeting off. But I think days wise, because the election is later, we're talking probably nine days or some, some difference like that from where it would have been in ordinary course. Is that, is that a challenge?
No, you know, I, I just, again, I, I'm just struggling to see the rationale for it, but I, you know, I know other folks have their hands up, so I'll let others know as well.
Sure. Um, looks like Vice Chair Santos.
So I, I, having been through many reorganizations in the past, they typically take about 45 seconds. So I don't know, and I don't want it to appear as a coup, that we want you out. I'm just thinking is that Nash, you know, the natural progression would have been at the May 11th meeting. And I don't know if, what waiting for the governor would have to say. We're, we're all experienced members on the board. There's going to be no change in the board. If we, if we potentially were going to have someone new come onto the board, absolutely, I think, holding off could, could be advocated. But I'm just not, I, I appreciate what you're saying, Ed. I just don't know, see the rationale, what the difference is between next week. I mean, May 11th and the two weeks after that. And I would, you know, it would be a month from today. I would, I would ask that, you know, I think having it as an agenda item for the 11th makes sense. It's just historically what we've done.
I can clarify, when I said what the governor's planning to do, that was in relation to where we're going to stand in terms of opening, reopening. My hope was that we would be, at least be able to be in the studio distanced by that point. Well, that was, that was perhaps optimistic, but that was, that was a part of it.
I think you're optimistic.
Fair enough. Counselor Dinaco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to echo the same sentiments as Vice Chair on this issue here. I, I personally do not see why the organization cannot, reorganization cannot occur on the same standard time as it has year in and year out for the last 11 years that I know. You make an argument, a good argument, that you want to delay it for two weeks. I don't see the necessity to it, though. There won't be any change in the existing board. And, and Ann said it, in 45 seconds, it's done. And, and then it's just a change of who's sitting where at that point. And then we just conduct the regular meeting. Town council's already told us that we didn't have, that we can do it at our discretion. It's not written etched in stone anywhere. I, I believe that the proper thing to do right now for any incoming chairperson is to be given the full 365 days. That's what their term is. And that's my belief on this. So I agree with Mr. Chines as far as initiating the discussion. And I go along with my vice chair in that I don't see why we, we have to have a delay in this. So I would prefer moving it for having it on our agenda for the 11th, having it the very first thing, and then proceeding with the meeting from there on in. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dinaco. Next is Counselor Smith Galvin.
Mr. Dinaco brought up a, a bit of what I was going to say. I also think it should be on the first meeting as scheduled after the original date of the election. I mean, you've done a lot in a year, and I think that the next leadership team, you know, kind of deserves to have those 365 days. So I would support it on the agenda next, next session as well.
All right. Thank you for that, then. Anyone else? Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate the feedback. On that, we move to item number 15, which, I'm sorry, 14, which is announcements.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chair, it looks like you have another hand up.
I do. I, I'm not seeing the hands, but I am seeing the names come through. Counselor May.
Yes, I'm a little slow these days. So I think we'll show some more to the 11th for the change. Just tradition. So I just want to make a note.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Counselor May. Anyone else? Okay.
I just put my hand up. I didn't realize that you don't see the participants.
I don't know. I, I'm getting a speed through WCAT.
Um, I also, so, so just want to echo what everyone said, that I think we should keep to the norm, because the board is not changing, that it should be the, the next meeting following, following what would have been the election. So the May 11th, the meeting.
Great. All right. Well, thank you for that, Counselor Butt. Any further comment that I'm not seeing? Okay, seeing that, item number 14 is announcements and acknowledgements. Again, this is the opportunity for members of the town council, the town administrator or Madam Clerk or, or town council with an E L to offer any recognition or announcements to the community. Obviously, we have less community events going on at present. But certainly there are, there are plenty of people that can still be acknowledged for great work they're doing. So with that, does anyone have any acknowledgements or announcements for this evening?
That would be me.
Counselor Dinaco, I'm sorry?
Thank you, sir. I'm going to be the first one out of the box, because I have a few things that I want to announce. First, I want to recognize two establishments in the town of Wakefield for going above and beyond during this crisis. The first one is Kimberly Ferrante, the owner of Carol's Cafe. She has done a phenomenal job of turning a bad situation into a good situation. And I mean, she just recently opened her business two weeks before the shutdown. And then in turn, went on a giveaway spree to almost every first responder organization that she could find, no matter what community. So my hat's off to an individual in her team for doing such a thing. The second one would be for Rod Faulkner from the T-Stop for his donation of 100 masks for our personnel to be used. Clear plastic masks. He gave those to us the day that we gave out the face masks down at the Galvin. Again, Rod in, in his, his company has always stepped to the plate for the town of Wakefield, and recognition needs to be given. My big item that I would like to announce to the board right now and to the community is that a group of organizations have united and is going to be launching a major crowdfunding measure in order to support the businesses in the town of Wakefield tomorrow morning. We are looking to raise $25,000 with the hopes of giving out up to $1,000 in grants to those who qualify. So this is a great way for the community to show their warrior pride. Support the businesses that have supported all of us throughout the years with donations and contributions to one cause or another. It's our turn now to support the merchants, the ones that are needing the most. So applications are on the website. Donations can be made on the website. There'll be an announcement in the morning. There'll probably be a full media, social media blitz. Hopefully, the town will be able to put it on the town website. So it's something that we should all look forward to in a way of supporting the merchants. I think it's a great, great, great concept. So there's four organizations, Rotary, Main Streets, the Independence Day Committee, and the Community Partnership, agreed on principle to unite and go forward with this measure. And we're going to do our best to reach out to everyone to see if they can make a donation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great opportunity. Thank you. Great opportunity. Thank you for for acknowledging it. Councillor DiNocco. Next is councillor Chimes, councillor Chimes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a couple of things I wanted to mention. First of all, while we, we started talking about reorganization in light of the election date changing, I just wanted to remind folks in the community. I had a tickler pop up on my calendar today that tomorrow was Election Day, which, of course, it is not. So just a reminder that that is June 23rd. I did also want to take a moment to recognize the Council on Aging, as we had a lot of updates today from our first responders from our Board of Health. All of whom are doing really great work in light of the COVID crisis. I I really want to highlight some of the work that the Council on Aging is doing as well. They're continuing to support our seniors in town. By obviously helping out with the distribution of masks, they're continuing to give rides to medical appointments and things like that. Connecting people to resources. And so, you know, they've, they've sort of flown a little bit under the radar screen in many ways. But want to appreciate the, the, the staff and volunteers that support that. Finally, just wanted to mention, I I think folks may have seen in social media and elsewhere, the level of demand. For the Food Pantry has been unfortunately increasing because of the economy and and folks facing challenges. And so just really want to highlight, while that is a great resource that I hope people take advantage of if they need it. The Food Pantry also needs support as well and would encourage people who have the the ability to do so to continue. Consider making a donation and supporting the great work that they do. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor Chimes, for that. Next is councillor Butts, councillor Butts.
I had two announcements. One was what Jonathan said. I just was texting with Maureen Miller earlier today from the Wakefield Food Pantry. They are up 70% of people seeking help than they were before this crisis started. So A, share the news about the Food Pantry. There have been Tuesdays and Thursdays. They actually have posted stuff in Spanish, too, if you know, Spanish-speaking families in town who could use their help. And then also wakefieldfoodpantry.org, if you can make a donation and help them out. 70% is is massive. And they are taking care of our friends and neighbors in Wakefield. And then the second announcement, I just wanted to say Happy Ramadan for people celebrating. I put myself on pinned video for a little bit because I was breaking my fast earlier on in the meeting. But we are on day four. We've got 26 more days to go, so I just wanted to wish everyone celebrating a Happy Ramadan. Is Steve going to talk now?
Ann, I think you have to take over for the time being because I think we lost Ed.
It looks like we lost Ed. Steve.
I was waiting, waiting to be recognized. I just wanted to say a lot of our. You know, we saw a lot of our team tonight and really want to thank them. They do a absolutely fabulous job. They're working really hard. They're, you know, working as a, you know, working together in in some very weird way. I think our whole management team has become closer through this whole ordeal. So to say to the people of Wakefield, stay strong. We will get through this together. And we are very grateful for your support. And what really makes me happy is that of our 12 first responders that were mentioned tonight. And there is, there are others that have been tested, too. Knock on wood, we've been very lucky with. Our town employees being healthy through this whole ordeal. So I do want to thank everybody for that. That was it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo.
There you are, Ed. What happened?
Connected for a minute there, technology. Do we have anyone else this evening? Did you see, is there anyone else that's, let's see, no. It appears we don't. So with that, I did just want to briefly again echo what Mr. DiNocco was saying. Thank you to the T-Stop, Rod, Rod Faulkner and his very generous donation of facials to the town. They'll be used by our first responders, and that's very, very much appreciated. Thank you also to 128 Plumbing and Heating, who made a donation of face masks to the town, and they will be made available to residents. I believe through the food bank, it'll be, they'll be handed out at the food bank among other potential locations. So again, thank you to them for that. And it really has been a great experience seeing everyone coming together, you know, as one community. It's really been encouraging and 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 some of the bright spots and in some, some very otherwise kind of gloomy times we've all been going through. So with that, that brings us to our final item on the agenda, item number 15 adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Move by Vice Chair Santos, I believe, seconded by councillor Smith-Galvin. Okay, well, we'll bring this meeting to a, to an end because there's only two and a half hours yet to get into the coloring contest. And I know Vic is working on that with the police department. So with that, assuming no discussion, just took our final roll call vote. Councillor Smith-Galvin.
Yes.
Councillor Chimes.
Yes.
Councillor Butts.
Yes.
Councillor DiNocco.
Yes.
Councillor May.
Yes.
Vice Chair Santos.
Yes.
And Chairman Dombrowski. All right, seven to zero, the motion carries. And adjourned, our next meeting will be on May 11th, 7:00 PM via Zoom. Thank you all for participating tonight.
Thank you as well. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Good night.